This podcast was recorded on April 29th, 2021. Hello, ladies, gentlemen, and people outside the binary. Broken Class is now in session. I'm your discussion leader, Thomas Huda. What an exciting day it is for me to be here with Laurel O'Rourke, the third person I'm interviewing who is vying to be a part of the 4J School Board, the Board of Directors for the Eugene School District 4J. Laurel, how are you feeling today?
I would say I'm exhausted, but happy to be here. I appreciate the opportunity. Thanks.
Right on. Hey, being a tireless public servant like yourself, I can totally understand. I hope they're paying you well enough at the county.
Oh, big money.
Right on. And so just the little bit of intro that I can give from what I know of you is that you are running for position two on the board. You are currently working in terms of, with the Lane County, in terms of helping people who were displaced by the fires that happened. And you know, today you were out maybe in Blue River, and you seem like you're going out and helping families all over. What is it that you're doing?
The work that I do is, because it's part of a disaster. It's kind of, what happens is it evolves as we go along. I've been attached to the recovery, well, it was emergency operations for the Holiday Farm wildfire, and now I'm part of recovery operations. There's a huge team of amazing people, and I don't say that just because I should, because I work with them, but I'm really impressed with the people in Lane County and then our local community organizations that step up and do this work. So by no means is it me by myself. I work mostly with state and some great individuals there. Shout out to Tara Ralph, she probably will not appreciate me for doing that, but she's amazing. So what I do is I'm the lead for Lane County to set up Disaster Case Management Program. There are people doing this work at the state level, and I am, really my job is to make sure it's our county and our residents and our needs are a part of that framework. Like they're aware at state level. So I work hand in hand with people at the state level are doing this work at ODHS. So what's gratifying about the work is I get to work with a lot of amazing individuals, been through a lot, which sounds like, wow, what a drain. But really, I'm talking to amazing people almost every day that who have had, had taken that sucker punch, which is a disaster, you know? And it's hard to plan for that. And, and helping people get connected and figure it out. And so while we don't have disaster case managers on the ground yet, yes, I'm doing a lot of that casework and social work with them. When we get our own disaster case managers in Lane County, I'll be able to pull back more and do more of the policy and help with housing and with our team with recovery operations. My official title is I'm a management analyst with community and economic development.
Beautiful.
Yeah.
Well, I am glad to learn more about that, about your role within that really important delivery of public services for people who have experienced one of like four totally game changing crises that happened around that time of those fires last year. And this is your first time running for public office. Is that correct?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Right, right. And so it sort of helps explain that, you know, a number of high profile and just very committed people in the local world of public service, such as Kitty Pearson, the two-term former Eugene mayor, three-term former Eugene mayor, I think, is your campaign chairperson. I was scrolling through Facebook. I saw Lisa Fragola from the LCC Board had a video giving you glowing praise for your candidacy. And so I'm excited to know that you, you know, are well-prepared. You've been working within the context of delivery of services to, you know, community members. But this is, you know, a show where I talk to musicians. I talk to people running for office. I've talked to people holding office. I talk to artists, and I want to get to know you as just a person, a human being. And I want people to have the chance to know you in that way. And I always like to ask at the beginning of the show, what is a controversial opinion that you have about anything?
Um, I would say, and my most, I feel it's controversial because it always makes people a bit excited, is that change can happen even when everyone says it's impossible. So
Nice.
I like to think outside the box. I, I think I'm forced to think outside the box because when the box is really narrow and there's no options, you gotta go outside. You gotta figure other things out. I think it's controversial because it makes people uncomfortable, especially in government work. And some people get excited, but most people are, we've been taught pretty well. It's like, let's keep things on an even keel and not up or down. And I think, I think it's one of the gifts of being a brown person that was raised in this, this city, you know? So being a black woman realizing, I'm not going to stay inside the box that you've decided to make for me in life. Nice try. So I think it's one of the, I take it as a gift and I, I move around and I'm like, but what about this? Why, what do you mean? No, if it's not working, what, that means it's not working. So we need to figure out something else. And so it does make people uncomfortable, but we get to solutions. And I work with other people, enough other people who appreciate and want that kind of energy that it's appreciated.
Awesome. I did hear in some of the research I did about you, you know, you were in a race, it's still a contested race. I think you have a great chance of winning. I think your campaign is really strong and reflects that you are a strong candidate. But it would have been a really, especially difficult race had Ann Marie Levis, the incumbent position two board member, stayed in the race. And I know that you really earned so much of her respect that she had chosen to withdraw and said basically like, you know, she was quoted as saying, I think my time has passed. And that she's like ready to see you come into the race. I also think that she mentioned that she kind of identifies herself as like a straight talker, and you are kind of a straight talker as well. And I think that that's exciting because there has been, and this is a little bit bouncing off of what you were talking about with your approach to change, is I've experienced with the school board, you know, I'm a 4J grad, so I was going to school board meetings when I was in high school and afterwards, and after I got my bachelor's. And, and there, it seems that there can be, whether it's enforced by any individual person or not, a sense that, hey, your tone needs to be in a specific way. If you're going to come bring your thoughts to the board, you don't want to yell and scream. You have, you have to really deliver this in a way that's polite and diplomatic. And, you know, I think that that does have a marginalizing impact on some people of color, some BIPOC people, or people who just are not able to, or choose not to express themselves in the most palatable way, because sometimes they think there's an urgency around being heard on certain issues. So how do you think that's going to play out when you're on the board?
Well, I mean, there's a word for that. That's called policing. I mean, if you're telling somebody how they have to say something to you, by just creating that energy between two people, you're saying, I am here, you're here, you need to behave. And that changes much more than just how, what that person is trying to tell you. So a lot of the social work I've done in the past is de-escalation and things like that. So one of the best ways to help somebody de-escalate, you know, besides, you know, having boundaries, yeah, there are rules that need to be followed, but is to be like, I hear you. You're upset, and I hear why you're upset, and I want to know more. And I, I mean, you're giving me kind of a great segue into one of my, one of my platforms, which is communication. And we do not have good communication. And it is one of the most simple, effective tools out there, allowing teachers, students, all educators, all staff members to have a way to have a voice and feel like they're heard. No, you can't make everyone happy. That's not how the world works ever.
Of course.
You know, but you can definitely, by hearing and understanding, get to a point where you understand why we're losing effective staff, you know? And we are. Why we have so many kids that just drop out instead of continue, you know? It's, it's, it's some, some of them don't feel like they're seen. I've been told that. I've talked to, I was a graduate of 4J too. Look at us. I think we're rare. We're like unicorns. In the sense, there's not, there's so many people from other places than Eugene.
Right. Staying in Eugene.
Right, exactly. But I think it's really, there were great things I got from my 4J education, and there were things that I hope I can help be a voice to change. And I think I went to school here when teachers had a lot more voice. And I've heard about that in the past, and I've heard that from the other people that are running, Maya and Tom DiLiberato, they have both expressed that things have changed a lot.
Right.
And I definitely, you know, I love this town, which I've, I've been here a long time. I left for a long time too. I was
I left a little bit too.
Yeah, every, we all leave. We all.
But then it's like, man, nothing is like Eugene, you know? For some of its flaws, but also for all of its beauty.
Exactly.
So you went to the military.
Yeah, I went, I went to the military and I, I, well, first with you, when we leave here, we go to Portland because hello, that's where everything was. And, and then I went into the military and I came back to raise my kids. Sorry, that was one of them just now. I'm in a meeting. I love them. I, I, my ex-husband, now ex-husband and I came back here to raise our kids. I have five kids. Three of them have learning disabilities. They have IAPs and struggle, you know, to, their education is hard. What, when I, I look at it in a way, when I go to write something down, I get to think about what I'm going to write, but none of the other stuff is hard for me, right? None of it. All of it is hard for them. Every single bit of it is torture. And, and that's how I kind of come to the understanding of maybe how it is for them because I can't be in their shoes, but I want to understand, you know, how I can help them. I can't say that has always happened at the school district here. And I've had to fight hard to make them relevant scene. And I mean, the school district was talking when they were in grade school about modified diploma. And the boy that he's a senior now, they were talking about would absolutely have to have a modified diploma, is graduating and taking calculus right now. So that wouldn't have happened.
Right.
If it didn't have this pushy mama.
Right.
And I, I want to be there for other parents who are, are so frustrated that, and I mean, it's terrifying. It is actual terror. Because you know, this is, they have dreams and hopes, and you want them to have it. And this is, school district is part of that. And if our job, if we're not succeeding, we're failing. And if we're not trying to succeed with every kid, we're failing. And we're not right now.
Right. Well, it's a mark of your tenacity that you have advocated in that way, but I think we would agree that you shouldn't have to. You know, here's an example. So when I left Eugene for a while, I went to Minnesota for undergrad at a small school there. And then I went to a year-long master's program in New York City. And, you know, I took this disability in education class that was the best class that I had, that I took there. I loved that course. And, you know, it just, one of the examples was on the subway in New York, like, okay, how many actual subway stops are ADA accessible? Are accessible for people who use a wheelchair? Like one in 11 or something. So are you going to tell me that mobility is actually practical? And in the subway already has its challenges, you know? And so, you know, disability is one of those marginalized groups in society where for, for one thing, it's such a vast experience. Every marginalized group has, none of them are monolithic, but there is an extremely vast experience of, of what that means and what those experiences are. But also I think in that way, it's one of the ones where it's most objectively clear that like, I don't know if like second-class citizen is too like, strong of a term, but like the way that they, that people with that identity experience the world is so clearly not accommodated. It's so clearly, because people can pretend like, oh, you know, people of all races, we don't have any discrimination in our laws. And it's like, well, there's not a lot of truth to that either. But it's so, it's so obvious. Yeah, I don't know why I'm making that comparison, but it's, it's just that it's, it's, it's been able to, there's a, there's an idea that like, oh, we're in 2021, the passage of time since, you know, this insert period of time when people were really oppressed here has passed. Like, you know, the passage of time doesn't automatically alleviate or like make, make reparation for the fact that a modern-day oppression exists, right? So, yeah.
I, I think we're in another civil rights movement right now. I think we're standing in history right now. And that is one of the reasons I, I mean, when I was, Kitty was the one who kind of broached the subject with me about how I thought about the school board. I was like, working about 80 hours a week at that point. I was just, just so, working, just working on a housing thing with Homes for Good and trying to get our people who are in shelter access to that and all these things. And I was like, well, that's crazy. And, and then I kind of stopped and I'm like, kind of pausing a bit. I'm like, is there any other black people who could do this? Because we have some amazing black people in town, and I really appreciate their work. And, and they're like, no, it, you know, it's, it's not you. And then you may not win because, you know, at that time it was, Ann Marie was still running. And I was, I felt like this primal, I'm not a metaphysical person. I'm a very, I love logic. I'm, I'm whimsical, but I love logic. Logic. Because it takes you so much further than just, you know, woo-woo. And also I was raised
How dare you say that in Eugene?
I know. I was raised in this town. Please still vote for me. But I still can't stand the smell of patchouli because being a kid in the seventies, it's just too much. And I felt compelled, and I felt it really as if my ancestors were saying, if not now, when? Like if this is a chance, maybe it's just right now. And if you don't, you know, take this chance and fight for our kids and do this stuff, then maybe there won't be a chance in a few years for you to do this. Maybe this is it right now. And if you're going to have to be brave, you know, what they say brave is, is being scared and doing it anyway. And I, oh yeah, it's terrifying to put yourself out there. I'm in the paper today. I told my son, he's like, all right. He's getting used, more used to it than I am. And I'm, I'm very much about, I do not want George Floyd to have died in vain, you know? All that stuff that happened after was for a very real reason. And I want to, the needle's moving, and if I can help it move more, I should do it. That's, that's kind of like, uh. And I, and I didn't, I would, I just, I do want to give kind of a shout out to Ann Marie because she was very much, we had a wonderful discussion, and she was so, I had no idea what to think of her. I didn't know anything about her because it had nothing to do with being against her. And it had more to do with, there's nobody that looks like me. Nobody has my lived experience making choices for the school district. And I know that's a problem because I was in this school district. I was policed. I was watched. I thought I was an idiot until I went to college and I finished in my 40s. And I was like, I'm kind of smart.
Wow.
You know, but that is what happens.
Right. And it is just like, it's an honorable thing to hear you say that. And I think that's wonderful. I also am just like, there can be room to be kind of pissed about the fact that like, it's not as though black activists and allied activists haven't been speaking about these issues since long before George Floyd was so obviously murdered and obviously brutally murdered, you know? And it's, and it's one of those situations where I'm glad we can hopefully build on the momentum that we've, that we've built around these issues. But, you know, it took Breonna Taylor and that incident, and then not a lot was, attention was paid to that. And then Ahmaud Arbery running in, I believe, Georgia and being killed by those two awful, awful predators. And then George Floyd for it to finally, and the pandemic for it to finally, you know, be something where it's like, oh, okay, you guys want to listen to us now? Or you want to listen to the people who have been saying this now? And I wish, because, because activists like to be proactive. They don't want to be reactive and, and, and they don't want it to just be because this trauma has taken place now that you're finally going to listen. Like equity is something that should be at the forefront, not, not, not on the trailing end.
I, I think it's so ingrained in our system. It's so part of our system. I see it at work in our structures that are put together, our land use laws, our planning, because I'm, you know, helping with, you know, rebuilding and all the, and what that entails. And looking at it and seeing, oh, it's this, they're only talking about property owners, but we had a lot of renters. We had a lot of non-traditional homeowners up. And so I want to make a point to say, what the, the superpower of being black in this town gives me, and I like to call it a superpower, is that I take those microaggressions and I make them my strength. So I can ferret out marginalization in a nanosecond. While you're thinking it, I already know because I deal with it every day, every day. And all the people who ever said, are you sure? And all the gaslighting and all those stuff that ever happened, I wasn't sure for most of my life. I just thought I was kind of a piece of crap. And I can tell you, at 52 years old, it wasn't my generation of black voices, though there's some amazing ones, that taught me that my black life matters. It wasn't. It was a whole younger generation who stood up and said, no, not anymore. So I'm always, partly because I have five amazing kids, but partly because our younger generations, when everybody's like, they're lazy, they don't do it. I'm like, no, nope. You don't get to just marginalize them, put them in a corner. They're amazing. And I, so I want to make sure people understand I'm not just a voice for people that look like me, you know, or, or darker. Because that happens. People are like, you're going to be the voice for black people. I'm like, yes, but I am also the voice for generational poverty. I am the voice for our disabled kids. I'm the voice for, you know, all, any marginalization that happens, I'm so acutely aware of it. And it's so, so distasteful and wrong, I'm going to say something. I'm going to be that thorn in the side.
Yeah.
And I, and I will be hopefully a thorn saying, this is wrong, and this is why. But it's saying it in such a way because you, you got to make it, you know, taste good a little bit, full of sugar. That I'll bring people with me. They will understand. So I know I'm not the only person on the board. I'm going to be, no. It's more like, no, and here's why, and here's what, maybe this is a direction we can go in. What do you think? And I really, that does work a lot for me in my work life. I do, I'm a mom of five teenagers and four of them are boys. Somebody has a sense of humor because that, I'm an only child. I have a wild, loud life.
Yeah. What a different upbringing, household-wise, that they're having compared to what you had. Do you know Jennifer Skirlock at all?
I know that name. I may, I could be just tired. Sorry if I'm forgetting.
No, no, she's taught, she's taught for a long time at North Eugene when I was there. She was my high school literature teacher. And then she went on to teach, I believe, at Sheldon. And she has been honored by the state of Oregon and for her work. She's a, a black woman, and she shared this thing on Facebook today that I thought was so powerful. And it was said, "In order to empathize with someone's experience, you must be willing to believe them as they see it and not how you imagine their experience to be." A quote by Brené Brown. And that to me seems like, you know, I think that I experienced some relative privilege in that I'm, you know, often white passing as a, as a half-Japanese person. But, you know, microaggressions are so clearly some of those things where it's like, okay, if you're, if you're telling me that you care about what I'm saying, but I know, I don't really, it doesn't really feel like you care, you're probably just thinking, well, Thomas is being a little sensitive today, but you know, that's real. So, you know? And that's something that, that, that I thought of when you said what you said about that. I also think, you know, as someone who went to a private college, and you went to Evergreen State, which is also a really interesting and cool quirky, small community. I went to a small school called Carlton College. Boy, the BIPOC students on campus all had this experience of being on the front of every admissions flyer.
Oh, we do that at U of M too, right?
Absolutely, right? And it's, and it's like, cool. You really, you really like saw some funny TikToks about it, like the, the campus photographer on the hunt for like, the one like black student they could find. It's, it's one of those things. I want to ask you about how it feels to be running as a candidate for public office. Because people, people are going to want to know why you're running. And I think we've touched on some of that, and it'll be evident in the way that you conduct your leadership. But how does it feel like? The process of putting yourself out there, knowing they have to raise money, producing all this literature and these signs and, and putting, making it so that your name, because I don't think you're doing it because you want your name to be like one of the big names in Eugene. I think you're doing it because you have to. Yeah. I think you're doing it because that's the process. You have to. Yeah, yeah. I hope I got it right. Most of the time, it's L-A-U-R-A-L.
Look at you, Thomas.
Some respect on it.
Wow, I love it. It's rare and beautiful. Thank you. It feels, yeah, it's new. I would say, I would say some of my government work has prepared me for it in the sense that, you know, you don't, you can't get, you can't show all, all your feelings and all that stuff. And it's not appropriate, you know, you got to be able to choose your battles per se. And I guess that's not too much in play right now at all. But for me, it is in the sense that I have to, I have two kids at school that are struggling right here, and I didn't let them go back to school because for some reason, you know, when you associate immunizations in school, you're like mandatory in your head. And when I found out actually, and it makes sense that immunizations aren't mandatory for the teachers, and then there was COVID at one of our schools, I was like, oh, I'm, I'm an idiot. No, my kids can't go back to school. And so they will be getting their second shot on this Sunday, which I'm excited about. I've been immunized because I work with people.
You talked about communication. There it is. You having to plug in the disconnect between the information that you didn't have about whether or not that would be in place, right?
Yeah, no, I was, it is, it feels kind of silly, like I should have put that together because I'm smart, like I said, sometimes. But going back to your question, it feels, it's weird having your name on stuff out in people's yards. I think I feel kind of disconnected from that in the sense that that's a thing, a tool that I have to use, and that's out there. And so I don't dwell too much on it. I, I feel like I'm, I'm a means to the, to an end in a certain sense, and I don't want that to be taken wrong. I'm, I, I'm doing this work because I have the ability to speak up and I have ideas of how we can do it better, and I'm going to put it out there. And I don't know how long I would last on the school board per se, you know? That's why we have a democracy. And I don't know how long I would last on the school board per se, you know? That's why we have a democracy, um, mostly. And, um, so I'm really excited to put myself out there and to share those views. And if they're liked or not, and see how that works. I know there will be people trying to put me in my place. And so there's gonna be some ruffled feathers. There'll be, cause nobody's gonna be allowed to do that anymore. I, this black woman doesn't allow that anymore. And I, uh, and I don't allow them to do it to other people, you know?
Right, right.
I, and so it feels strange, but it also is just kind of like a means to an end. We gotta, it's a lot of work though. I,
Yeah.
Somebody had told me about the endorsement part, I probably would have been like, thank you. Uh, no. Not that I didn't enjoy talking to everybody, but talking to everybody one day after another, after another. And now they're having like these town halls and type things, one after another, after another, after. I have to say, this is one of the most enjoyable things I've done because it's, it's not that feeling of, boy, I gotta remember everything I need to say, and I better not mess it up. And I better not be so tired that I can't articulate.
Right, yeah.
You, you make this very comfortable. So I appreciate that. Thank you, Thomas.
I'm glad, I'm flattered because we didn't know each other before this. But, um, I do have a, some sense of the really procedural and like evaluative feeling of those endorsement interviews. Um, just so you know, in your race, I already endorse you. You already earned it. I don't know how much weight that has, but I think, um, it's part of the, the community-centered, um, you know, movement that is behind you that, you know, I'm not unimportant. I'm, I'm not more important, but you know, everybody has that, that sense of importance. I do think too, when you're gonna be on the board, um, you're gonna be sitting on that dais and you're gonna have that little placard and you're gonna be there. And, um, I hope that you remember what it was like and often how intimidating it was to approach that board. I went, and when I spoke, you know, they don't let you turn and, uh, and address the people behind you when you're at those meetings. I'm not saying that needs to change, but
Oh, there's something that needs to change.
Right.
Two minutes to, to how, you know, we need to not be like, oh, you may approach the bench. It should be less of an audience. We are working for, you know, that's one thing about being somebody who works for the government. I see my work is definitely, I am a steward for my county. I help our citizens, you know, and I take care of, make sure I don't spend too much of their money. And you know, cause we're a steward of their, their money that they pay us to do this work. So we're always aware of this stuff and working towards it. And I know not everybody believes that, and that's fine. Cause I don't believe it when everybody says it in government either. But I do believe if I, as an elected official, I am working for all the people that are in, whether they voted for me or not. That's how the job works. And so anybody who comes to me wanting help or something, I think they should have the ability to have that conversation. And it shouldn't be, don't listen. I think that's old dogma that needs to go away, like racism.
Yeah.
There's a lot of that stuff.
Right. I think another thing that might happen that I can see happening too, cause I, I, I like politics a lot. Not everybody likes it. Politics is like my sports. I ditched ESPN for, well, I don't wanna say the name of the networks I watch, cause I don't even really like them, but I watch them. So.
I'm gonna call you to get the lowdown, so I don't have to watch.
Right. Well, okay. As a generalization, what happens sometimes is a president will get elected. And then two years later, the other party will do really well in the midterm. So like Obama got elected in two thousand eight. In twenty-ten, you had the Tea Party movement being like, government tyranny, don't tread on me. The taxes are too burdensome and things like that. And I think one thing that I'm seeing happening now is people are starting to say, you know, they're trying to say Biden, he's a socialist. He wants to do all this major government spending. And that's like the federal thing, but also like on the local level too, people really do scrutinize, you know, um, like the tax burden and then therefore like the government's wasting our dollars. And, and as somebody who is gonna be advocating for, you know, that, um, the resources that four J does have to be used appropriately, like I think you will see people being very critical, being very scrutinizing really intensely, like those budgets and those things. And, and so I guess how do you, um, justify and, and convince people that the things you're fighting for are worth, you know, putting that money towards?
Well, I think it, it, there's several things, doing your homework, understanding. Um, I'm definitely, I'm not just saying I'm pro-union to get their endorsement. I'm pro-union. The union is about that one voice that doesn't feel heard. And whatever, we talked about marginalization. You can just be, in our history of this country, that one voice could be totally mistreated and, and not taken care of and not, as happening right now, paid enough. And I appreciate unions as that, still are against that, you know? We have to have something. I know not everybody loves unions.
They brought us the weekend.
Exactly. So many things. That's just one of the good ones. Like, we wouldn't even have that, right? But it's, you know, the end of child labor, all kinds of beautiful things. Um, the reality is, is that we need to pay our people well. And then, you know, people talk about, well, you can't, you gotta save the money here and pull it here and do this. And I don't like to play those games. I won't, I'm not really good at, well, we gotta make so-and-so happy if we wanna build this over here. Um, I'll probably have to figure out some of that. Cause you know, if I get outvoted, I get outvoted. But, and the reality is, I will be voting for, um, fair wages. I, I know there's a name for it. And I apologize to all my union peeps who have tried to teach me this, cause I'm still learning. But it's where we look at contracts for unions because they pay fair wage and have, um, medical benefits. And, you know, and the same goes for our people.
Collective bargaining? Is that, I don't know.
I, I will send it to you. It, it's, it's got some initials attached to it. And I work in so many things that have initials attached to it. I think my brain just, it falls out the other side. But it's important. And I guess it's just one, a few parts of why it's important, but it's, it's basically you have to work with others. You've gotta do your homework. You can't phone it in. You can't cater to special interests. I, I am not good at that part of life where I think it's unfair. I'm still got that little five-year-old in me sometimes stamping my foot going, but it's not fair. It's not okay. And I remember my mom saying, sometimes life's not fair. And I hated it when she said that.
That's, but kids have a, an instinct for fairness and they, and that's one of those things that schools can, can trample out of people. But ultimately like, kids like, kids can, kids can be a little mean sometimes, but like, you know, usually in a group setting, like sometimes you pile on because they're still learning. But the most, for the most part, the heart of a child is, is pretty pure. And so finding ways to like, be like, yeah, it isn't fair. So just because everybody's kinda going with it, doesn't mean that, that we should just be okay with it. Um, yeah.
Well, that, just what you just said made me think of being in IEP meetings for my son and realizing that everybody in this room has a master's degree, but is blaming my son for not being a good learner. I mean, it's just like the most, isn't he the easiest person to blame? But also, he's got a mama bear. So, and, and I should say, when I say that, I feel like a lot of our educators have been put in a place where they have, this is a party line thing, like admin is saying, this is how we do it. And this is what you have to do. And you gotta try to get him to do this. And I know we have great staff and we need to let them beat great staff. We need to pull back a little bit. And I, 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 being in part of the, I'm really excited to be part of the decision-making for our, our next superintendent. Because I will, that'll be where a lot of my passion goes. It's like, it, I need somebody who understands how important it is to teach emotional intelligence, you know, starting in grade school. I need somebody who is, who sees all of our kids and is not just working to step up to, you know, another higher position somewhere, which we've had recently. Um, we need, we need people to, what you just talked about, that, that, that heart to, to come here and make a difference and be part of our, 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 um, community and not just leverage.
Right. It sounds to me, Laurel, like, because you know, four J was one of the premier districts, one of the most amazing places for education in the whole country for, for a while. And, and it sounds like you understand what pieces are still here that can, that can fit into that happening again. Um, the, the staff being, being, we attract so many wonderful teachers. And, and boy, I could, I could not name for you on, if I, I could be an alien with five hands, then I wouldn't be, be able to count the amazing teachers that I had on my hands, you know?
Mrs. Bowers in Condon School was my favorite teacher in the whole world. And I can tell you why, because she's probably one of the few teachers that saw me, you know, that didn't just treat me as a problem or an issue or anything else was really, just really saw me. She saw all of us. She was, she, I, I, I don't remember a lot of my teachers, but I definitely remember Mrs. Bowers.
Well, if, um, it is exciting that you are, and, and so many other people that I really trust, particularly Martina Shabram, particularly Gordon Lafer, Maya, hopefully Tom, will be able to make that decision about the, the superintendent, because leadership is so important in this time. And it, that's gonna be one of the most influential ways to bring us back to where we really could be and should be. And, um, that's very exciting. I also wonder what other, um, well, actually, can I, can we talk a little bit about mental health? Because I think that that's an area where we recognize a real, undermet need for services here in, in, um, Lane County and in Oregon. Um, and that's something also, I know that Anne Marie Levis, uh, felt that she really aligned with you on in terms of having that be a priority. So what, um, what do you see as ways to advocate for that? And what can the, what can the district do to, to make sure that we come back from this, this lack of support?
Well, I mean, as far as, I mean, part of wrapped up in all of this is coming back from COVID, right? And what that means. And, um, I think one of the primary things is not having that idea, which you'll hear a lot, the refrain, our kids are behind, our kids are behind. That's not a truth unless you speak that truth, especially if you speak it to the children. They can be who they are, where they are. We have great educators, teach them, move forward. They're gonna have a way to assess. And I'm not talking about standardized testing, so don't get excited, everybody. Standardized testing only benefits the people that make standardized tests and make all that money off of them.
It measures how much money your family has a lot more than it measures college readiness or whatever.
What's your zip code? I can tell by your test card. Um, so, yeah, I would say it's really important that we are careful in our framing of re-entry. It can't be just like, oh, you're here, you're behind, we gotta get going. Come on. No, 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 you can't do this. That will cause so much mental damage to these kids. That is, we did, completely unnecessary. Meet them where they are, educate them, be excited for them to be back in school. And, um, not, it's gonna happen, so I'm terrified. But I think if we work hard, really hard, we can help mitigate that. Like really mitigate that. And cause I, one thing I know is most of the teachers aren't bored with that. The people that are more political animals that work in admin, and some of them are not teachers,
Yeah.
are the ones like, oh, no, we gotta do this. This is, we're way, way behind. And we gotta, and I'm, you know, I'm like, no, 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 these are humans. These are, this isn't a, you know, a, a stock or a business or something like this, you know, cause that's how they try to run it right now. Um, these are human beings. So.
And that is such a socially constructed form of whether it's insecurity or trauma, if you wanna go as far as to use that word, which it absolutely is. It's a collective trauma that's enforced on people of, I'm behind, I'm not good enough. And when we were homo sapiens out foraging, uh, I don't think we were worried about not like, being like the most advanced in our knowledge of like, which grasslands have the most nutrients. I think that it was like a sense that like, hey, we're here.
Like, you better know how to run.
Yeah. Are you running the four-minute mile yet? That's funny.
They were two tigers with bats, I hear. Um, you know, I, the other part, and you're right, I was very much aligned with what Anne Marie Levis was talking about with our, our kids' mental health. I think we have a lot of work to do in the school system. I would, I want to break up some of the siloing. Um, so the school system works alone. But I worked, my job, I just had, um, I worked for Health and Human Services, which is, part of that is behavioral health. I worked with a lot of people that had, um, what is called a severe persistent mental health disorder. Um, and the reality is that we have systems here and people who do work and we could, I mean, we have Roger Brubaker, who works, works, does amazing work with suicide prevention. And we can make sure that communication and that access is happening and that we're having these conversations. And we're creating a place to be collaborative, not just like, no, we got this, you know? There's no problem here. Don't talk about it. And then it's not here. It's here. Cause my son lost his, um, best friend when he was sixteen, seventeen. And this boy had grown up coming to my house. And he, um, he died by suicide. And it was, all those kids dealt with it in summer. And there was not anything from the school district. These are all kids that went to school together. This is like, you know, there was nothing. I got more because I worked for Human Services. So I had people from Human Services out of the goodness of their heart reach out to me. Cause they had heard about it from my supervisor. But it was, it's a definite, you know, and that's, may sound like one thing, but it's, we know it's not. It's happening. We have kids that are hurting. They need to have a place to go. It is the hardest thing I can, I find is for kids to know how to access services. Either on their own, which is legal, um, once you're a teenager, it's legal. Once you're, I think, fourteen or over, maybe it's fifteen. And, um, you know, how to access it, it can be paid for, um, all these things. Creating that framework of making it simple and just accessible means you get somebody you can talk to and you're not just figuring this all out by yourself. Because sometimes it is, it's a lot and there's a lot going on, but having someone to talk to when you're spinning, so important. And it can't just be the kids that have means to get that.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And it's, sometimes it's not even them. They don't wanna tell their parents. So they should have that access anyway. So, I, I mean, those are two kind of very specific examples, but there's a whole lot of work there. I see, I do know there's a whole lot more in the world where we're noticing a lot more mental health, um, issues. I'm not saying it right, cause I'm not a mental health professional, but it is very much like, we see it. And we see that's a lot, people who are just having a hard time, um, dealing with society. That's one of my things with skills before bills, which is the, um, CTE work I want, when, I wanna do, I want kids to be able to do that starting in their junior year. I want them to be able to have a skill so they have some kind of, I don't wanna go to college, I'm being ignored cause I don't wanna go to college. There's not much for me. Um, and having a pathway to find that value, to see their worth to, which is, I know our worth isn't just in what we do, but it helps a lot if we can feed ourselves and we can help take care of ourselves, right? Which I know from my work at Human Services, we're, we have a lot of people who graduate without that. And that's another silo I'd like to break down and really cross collaborate, make sure. And that's another silo I'd like to break down and really cross collaborate, make sure we're helping and taking care of people and then, and my big picture thing, because I like to think big, is perhaps we in several years lower amount of people experiencing homelessness. Because we've given them more ability.
Honestly, I think like, you talked about mental health, you talked about career and technical ed, and you talk about people experiencing homelessness. And like, people could look at those things as disparate, but there's totally probably tons of intersections and linkages between those kinds of things. And like from the mental health to the CTE, um, you know, like, uh, I love my mom who is a really um, intense Japanese mom who didn't go to college and moved here as an immigrant and wanted me to have the best opportunities possible as far as college. But boy, were there also times when I wish that a recognition could have been made that like, hey, um, I can choose one of these grad programs I got into that wasn't an Ivy League school and like, maybe that might be a healthier place for me to be. Um, and or just as far as the CTE angle, like, why is it that we still have this like, you know, Harvard was the first school in the country because like they had, like, they had, they had to educate the pastors that were coming here. And that doesn't mean that like, like that's the best place to like learn this, like all of the disciplines that people learn between eighteen to twenty-two. Like that's so weirdly outdated and yet still like looked at as like the main goal. And like, I actually think at North, we had less of an emphasis on like, go to like the most elite school possible than like, maybe like a South or like some other schools uh, have. Um, I'm not knocking it. I, I think they would probably say the sum of the same thing. So I think there was value in that, but also just like value in recognizing like, there's so many ways to like come into your own. And there's so many ways to find out who you are, which like goes into the mental health. And hopefully being able to like prosper enough to, um, you know, I, I, I was um, unhoused for um, late twenty-nine to early twenty-twenty as well. And like a mental health, things that came out that hadn't, um, been recognized from when I was a four J student that maybe could have been recognized. I think like des- digmatizing uh, like getting a diagnosis and like getting some help for um, mental health issues. Whether you're somebody who is like seen as like the person excelling and, and carries a lot of pressure. Or whether you're just anybody because like being a freaking human is hard.
Right. I know. I absolutely want it to be treated like cancer. No, nobody wants cancer, but you can just get all the services you need for it. It is so hard to get people the services they need for mental health services. And everybody's like, just do this. And you're like, if only it were that easy. In our society and how it's set up, it's not that easy. And Oregon is in our, for our health system, we're more advanced than many states. So really lucky in that regard, but we have not spent the money on um, substance use. Oh, we could talk about everything, couldn't we, Thomas? And addiction and, you know, that's self medicating.
I love that kids in Oregon, yeah, they do. And kids in Oregon, wow, that's a great point. Um, also led the way on like mental health, uh, what is it? Day? Like sick day or something like that? Like there, I don't remember what moved forward, but they were basically like acknowledging that like, yeah, sometimes you might be not well enough to go to school and it's not because you have a fever. Like, you know, it's because if I go to school and face this per- this person and this bully and go to this and this, that's going to escalate things. And I know that I'm going to be better served by taking like one day or something.
Yeah. Love yourself. Do it.
Right. I faked stomach aches in senior year of high school. I told my mom I had severe stomach aches. We went to the doctor. I lied about the, about, and they like, were like, I don't know why you'd be experiencing this. And that sucks. That sucks. It was just, um, and now I'm trying to make this all about my experience because that's not my goal.
But I mean, it does speak, you're, what you're talking to is like, if you had somewhere you could talk to about whatever you were really stressed about, like, um, I, I don't know if I'm wrong about this, but I remember I went to Spence Bute Junior High. No, that's how old I am. And um, I, we had actual counselors. So when we had counselors, it wasn't just somebody to like, well, what class are you going to take and da, 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 da? It was like, so, I hear you've been having some hard times and let's have a chat about it. And I, as far as I can remember, they were pretty dang good at having that conversation with, you know, willful teenagers. Me? Yes, absolutely. I was. Um, so I think you're absolutely right, having, and I do think sometimes the simplest solution is the solution. It doesn't have to be outrageously expensive. It is having, um, I know Anne Marie talked about peer mentors. I mean, in moderation, yes, not everybody's going to want to talk to their peers. Sometimes that's all people will talk to. You know, but also be careful what you are putting on another kid because it could be a lot. So having training and helping, you know, when it's too much and reporting, you know, how that works and safety. All such good stuff and could work. It just needs to be implemented. It needs to have a program. It needs to be implemented. We have to have people behind it. So I, I appreciate your story because it does speak to the fact, you know, your kids, you're confused, you don't, you just feel bad because you're lying about something and you feel kind of dirty about it. You know, and as an adult, my head goes to what was going on for you to have to go to that extreme. You know, that, I mean, that's, that's my trauma informed training. There's all, there's, you're thinking about what got somebody to someplace, not just what their behaviors are in front of you.
Yeah. Beautiful. Um, and one thing that you know that I care about is, is uh, is related to mental health on a day to day, which is music. I find that, that, um, you know, of course it's helpful to have talked to a professional. But it's also really helpful when like, I know, like, if I just like put on this Radiohead album or like, I really put on this Run the Jewels album, like, that's going to like take me from like this stasis or like boredom, doing nothing, laying in bed to like amped up, excited or like introspective enough to figure out what I need to do right now with my time. Um, and I know that you know that I want to ask you about, um, how music, um, in, I don't know, is meaningful to you and like what artists you like, because I like to ask public figures. Because I, I, I'm unapologetic about the fact that it's like, I think this matters as much as anything else we talked about matters.
Oh, I absolutely agree with you. Um, I was just telling somebody about this the other day and I think I was probably brought it up because you, because of your question I, that you sent me. Um, but I love music so much that I just like to be inside of it. So I listen to it loud. I have, I am the mom whose kids say, could you please turn down your music?
Love it.
Like, alright grandma. So I, I have eclectic tastes, but also interestingly enough, it's funny because I love, um, Dave Matthews. Um, when my, my ex-husband now, um, was downrange, he was in, um, um, Iraq. I think Dave Matthews, I mean, I don't think it's outrageous to say he probably saved my life. I was so depressed. Mom of five young kids and my husband on three tours of Iraq. I, I just, tho- those jam bands, you know, um, what if you could sit on top of the world with your legs hang, hanging free, you know, those kind of, I just needed that and it took me there. Was funny as I've been to several concerts and I'm like, there's more black people on the stage than
Yeah.
And I'm like, alright, I get it. I also.
Well, you take the whitest first name and the whitest last name and you're like, Dave Matthews Band.
And white man band. But you know, it's, it's just, it's, he's a good jam. I love Radiohead. I love all kinds of music. I do karaoke. I love karaoke. Um, at first it was just to challenge myself because I felt terrified to sing in public and Nice. And second was to be like, ah, music. I, I tell other people to sing. They're like, I'm not a good singer. I'm like, oh no, karaoke is not about being a good singer. It is about you loving to sing. So if, build it out, enjoy yourself because you will feel all those endorphins. And it, it is fun. And so I encourage people to try it because it is, it is, singing is such a fun thing. I, that, that shame that goes with it, that comes from outside, right?
Right.
Have fun singing, sing, please sing.
Well, karaoke is like, it's, it's explicitly like a safe space for not being the most talented. Open mics are a little similar. Okay, fair enough. That's a good point.
If I'm there, it will be.
I love it. I love it. I talked to Tom about um, talent shows because you know, he has played at some of this, his middle school talent shows at Monroe. And like, talent shows are awesome because like, for the most part, you go, a kid goes up there and plays a little piano and is sloppy because there's in front of 200 people for the first time in their life, doing anything, like your nerves react. Everybody goes at the end, wow, it's like, yeah. And, and, and that's where I love to see is like, where's the, why does competitiveness have to be a part of art? Most artists are like, I don't know if they'd say tortured people, but most artists are like, people who like are the biggest critics of their own work anyway.
Oh, yeah.
Like, let's support people when they're just trying to do something.
Yeah, yeah. Cause that's, I mean, that's the beauty of art. Um, I love it. And I would, I also like to say, I, I mean, I brought up Dave Matthews because you asked the question and he was so, I loved him so much. Um, I do love, um, Nina Simone, Sugar in My Bowl. I remember the minute I heard that song for the first time, I think I was like twenty and I was just stopped me in my tracks. It's just, and it's my go-to if things aren't, if you hear me playing that song, uh, maybe as my kids and I call it Malonkali.
Malonkali, Malonkali. I like, I love it. Well, I mean, Nina, talk about someone who's just, her voice has so much weight. And there's so much emotion in every syllable. Like that is, that is amazing.
Yeah. Uh, Sarah Vaughan, one of my karaoke songs I love to sing is Whatever Lola Wants. And I, I tell my partner Lola's my alter ego. Whatever Lola wants, Lola gets. He's like, nice try. But yeah, so I like the, I like the classics. I love the kinks. Oh, I love the kinks. I forgot about the kinks. Give the people what they want.
They weren't really giving their due in their day. The kinks are kind of like the monkeys, I think, were looked at as like, you guys are like a teeny bopper band.
Oh, really? I didn't know that.
So, I think so. Uh, but now, yeah. Nice.
Yeah, cause Destroyer, I love that song.
Nice.
Paranoia. Maybe it's called paranoia. Paranoia, the destroyer.
I'm working on my hip hop album. My, my, it's been seven years since I put out a hip hop album. We just shot the album cover. It's called Chicken. All of the track titles are named after chicken dishes. Uh, they're like, I'm like holding a live chicken. Really? I should have shot it with your chicken, dang. But I went to my friend Rihanna Williams, shout out to her and her mom Gwen Guilleam. They were so kind to let me shoot a photo op for a, for a hip hop album in their chicken coop, you know, that's a once in a lifetime thing. Yeah.
Okay. I need to, you need to send this to me or I buy it, however it works.
Right, right, right. No, I'll send, I'll send, yeah, I'll send you some streaming links for sure. Yeah. I want to ask you maybe one, maybe two or more questions.
Okay.
Um, and I think that like, when I think about what the schools are as a place, like, I, you know, I love people. I love people so deeply. I have friends who, um, I were right leaning or conservative leaning in school. Some of them have gone um, far into what I think is an ideology that I find distasteful, but I still really pride to have love for them and understand where they're coming from. As long as they're like, um, uh, you know, sincere actors and really believe that their ideology is right. And I don't support anybody of any political persuasion who just has bigotry or hatred for, for people, right? And um, so I think that happens in schools in four J's. I've just known like really bright people, really um, valuable conversations that, that, um, because they like their families are conservative, let's say, or voted for a certain like candidate back in the day or whatever, that they felt like they couldn't speak up in the classroom. And I think that that is, um, a real challenge. I don't want to dismiss just because it's not my own challenge. And so, um, I guess, um, like because, um, you know, Eugene is, is an eclectic place with people with a lot of varying opinions. And it's not just, um, a spectrum of like, you're, you consider yourself liberal to where you consider yourself super progressive and leftist or whatever it may be. Like, are there, um, are there any like areas where you embrace or appreciate a more conservative approach? Um, or, um, just what are your thoughts on what I, everything I just said?
I appreciate the question. I definitely, uh, um, have hung out with my share of Republicans and in my time. Um, also though, I think there's parts about me where I absolutely feel like I would probably be an Eisenhower Republican. But also in our day and age right now, he wouldn't be a Republican.
No. You know, he came up with the term military industrial congressional complex. They took out the congressional later because it was showing their cards too much.
Yeah.
Oh. We should be worried about this. And then the whole Congress was like, no, we shouldn't.
No, 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 that's my, that's how I feather my bed. Um, yeah, I, I definitely, um, I would say at times I'm a physical conservative in some ways in that, if you look at that time period, it's so weird because being fifty and having gone to college and done the studying of the different time periods, you look at it and you go, I don't identify with what I find it, a lot of it, just like, I'll take care of me. You can't take care of you. I guess you may die in a hole. Oh, well. And I'm like, that doesn't need to be how we survive, you know, we, there's a book, um, I have it in here. Um, it's called The Spirit Level. And that, you know, I told you I like um, data, well, logic. And along with that is data. And they, it's an older book. I think it's probably over 10 years old. Spirit level is a level in England and these were two, um, I don't know if both of them are statisticians, but they, they looked at all the numbers. They did the graphs and they proved that society is stronger and more whole if we're all more on equal levels as far as money and what we have. And you know, when we have so many people that need so much and billionaires.
Yeah.
Then we're not healthy. And you can see it. We have over 200 and some people living in our parks. You know, in one park, that's Washington Jefferson.
Right, I was gonna say, yeah.
And I may have my numbers off there, but I, the reality is, is we're not healthy right now because we're so off. I don't think anybody needs to be a billionaire. I don't think you won when you were a billionaire. There's no way to um, spend all that money. You didn't win all the toys. I mean, you may have, you think you have, but you actually, it's just, it's to me, that's not right. I don't mind people getting ahead and doing amazing things and making things happen. It's when it gets to that level.
Yeah. How can you say you earned it? Had it, so someone who worked, you know, forty hours a week and made thirty thousand dollars, did you, and, and you made, um, I don't know, eight hundred million dollars in that same year. Is it because your effort was that many times more than her effort or his effort or their effort? I hear you. I hear you. Um, and it's wild.
So I like the parts of, uh, I like difference in people. I don't want us to be all the same. Uh, the way we are in society where it's like, you're this, uh, you're this. So I will call people racist on Facebook. That's kind of my valve.
I think you're doing them a favor. I don't, I've gotten into this with people.
I'm sure they do too.
Well, it's the last thing they want to be called if they're engaging in racism, but you're doing them a favor by being honest with them. They might not like the way that they experience it, but like, yeah, fix the problem and then there won't be the problem, homie, like.
How dare she? And it's really, I just, it's, and then it's not my most grown up thing I do, but it is. And then it's not my most grown-up thing I do, but it is definitely a valve. Where I can just, you know, I see it, I deal with it, it comes at me. I've had to make. Reports about racism against our police here. I've had to. I deal with it. And so, but also, I don't deal with it by always. You know, putting my finger in somebody's eye and being like, you know, what you just did to me, because I have to. In the day-to-day, I, I wanna have that, that connection, which I can make with. A lot of different kind of people, which I love because I love the differences. So it's not like, oh, I'm gonna like the differences. It's like, we're different, I like it, you know, and um. And we may not agree on everything, but that's, that's normal. That's okay. We don't have to agree on everything. It, it, when your opinion threatens my existence, that's when it's, it's not okay.
More than just a difference of opinion, that's some serious seriousness that needs to be intervened with.
And we have a lot of people fighting for it right now, but the reality is, is. Those in, with a lot of money and a lot of power, it behooves them to have us fighting. Amongst each other, cuz then we don't look at who actually is holding all the strings, right?
I am, that's where, I wanted to say something like that cuz I totally think that that's one of the biggest, most urgent. Issues is just, I hate my neighbor, but we're both getting screwed by this stuff, you know, like.
The train, it's so, it it's so, it's part of how we're put together. It's in our structures of everything that's made. So your neighbor will, it will, just because you told him, that's not okay, is not gonna be like, well, I guess I changed my mind. Cuz it's part of everything that they've learned since forever, right? And so it takes a lot more than that. There are definitely people that get to there, who people make fun of and call them woke, because they. They decided to pay attention and give a damn. Um, but I. I, I read this great quote, I hope I remember it well, as LeVar Burton, I don't know if you saw it, but he said. They're calling it control. No, what is it calling when, when you wanna, wh- when you stop people, cancel culture? And it's actually, there, I think he called it conscience. Culture, meaning that if you are shut down because of your behavior. That's people saying your behavior is the reason you're shut down. It's not. You're not canceled. That takes the onus off of you, puts it on the people shutting you down. It's your behavior and conscience that has. Not behaved right. I hope I said that right. I'll try to look for it and send it to you because it was, I read that this morning and I was like, yeah.
I'd love to see how he words it. First of all, cuz I think he's a brilliant human being.
I love him.
And second of all, because like, it's such a really interesting conversation to have, this cancel culture conversation, because. Um, first of all, I think everybody on all sides of the political spectrum try to engage in what this thing that we call cancel culture. Um, it's not like, right now, it's like, you know, the former president was all trumpeting it because like. Needed something to talk about and rile people up about. And then he's the one saying, hey, F Goodyear, they won't let people wear my hats. And you know, F this person and and like, shut down this news, like, you know, and it's like. Um, it's really an interesting situation where, um, I just hope maybe through things like this, people can have. Um fuller conversations about, about where we, where we can move forward. Um.
I think, I mean, it's the.
And also LeVar Burton, I really hope ends up being a long-term host of Jeopardy. He wants to do it. I want him to do it. Yeah. And they're gonna give him like a week or something like that, a trial, I don't really, yeah, so anyway.
I'm glad they did. I'm glad they did cuz he'd be amazing and he, I, I don't think it would have happened without. The public going, wait a minute, get on this. Um, yeah, I think we, I believe in humanity. Um, I think we can get there. I think I see so much goodness and beauty every day. I mean, in the work I have been doing um in town and upriver with our wildfire survivors. Amazing people who are like, yep. Gotta start over and I guess I just put one foot in front of the other and. Or, you know, I, uh coming to me and going, I'm sorry, I wasn't able to make that appointment. I'm like, no, 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 no. You got here, good job. Do not tell yourself there's anything wrong with you because you're dealing with a lot. Please, that's just adds more. But that's how, kinda how we're set up, you know, like you have to show up to something else, you're in trouble. And so we, I'm dealing with all wonderful people that are just trying to survive and you would probably guess that a lot of people upriver are probably. Um, have a lot of conservative values.
Absolutely.
Are very, you know, divergent from probably my ba- basic values. Um, I think our, oh, I shouldn't say basic values cuz I think all our basic values are the same. We're all human beings. We all are just trying the best we can. Absolutely, I believe that all, it's. Even the person you see and going, oh, they're not just trying, you shouldn't, you shouldn't reward that. They're probably trying the best they can. So, give them some help and people will move forward and I believe the same, um. I just, I. Like, I believe in hope and means that um I always tell the story that when I'm talking to people, I'm hearing sad stories every day. And people are like, how can you do that? That is just depressing every single day. And I'm like, because I'm, while I'm sitting him with that story. I'm, I'm looking past it. I'm saying, so, this is, this is where you are, but this is where we're going and this is where is. Am I hearing you right? Because it's their life. I'm not gonna tell them what to do. And then I am, so I had to think this through because it wasn't. Am I a weirdo? Because I'm not all depressed cuz I'm talking to people about sad stuff every day. I think it's that I'm like. No, I've been in bad places. I haven't lost my house, thank goodness. Um, but I've been in places where I just. I feel hopeless and I'm not sure how to get out of it. And having somebody with that voice and helping me through it to the other side. Is what you need. You don't need somebody to dwell with you in the sadness. You need somebody to be like, this is what I see, da 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 da. And people are like, yes, that's what I need. And I'm like, awesome, let's do it. And if you, if you, any barriers, tell me and I'll help you break it down. And I always, one of my things I tell people is, I, um, my superpower is I have a big mouth and I use it for good, not evil. So I will stand in front and speak when somebody cannot and I think that's kind of what I wanna use on the school board. Cuz I don't, I can see some of the things that have been happening. That um our marginalized communities don't have somebody to speak for it. Does that make them bad people? No. They are not aware cuz they haven't been part of them. Some of them kind of, so I, I do get like, huh.
Hey, and maybe they, you know, everybody has a lot of people in their ear and some of them.
True.
Are gonna have a lot of very privileged people in their ear, a lot of wealthy donors in their ear and that's going to affect their ability to. Fight for every, for the marginalized uh community members that need that advocate. Laurel, I really appreciate the time that you've taken. I don't wanna dip more into your time with your family this evening, um but I wanna say. First of all, you don't need my advice that I'm about to give you. I don't think you need it at all. But before you said something about how. You know, maybe I get voted out in four years. You are, you're gonna do your best, like you said, everybody's doing their best. I think there's very, very little chance that um, that in Eugene, somebody would be able to win a citywide race. Against you from what I've heard, um, uh, from, from what I see of what you're able to do. Um, and so I don't think you're gonna, again, need me to say this, but don't care about how, you know. That potential or for anybody to like say, she said this, she did this, just go kick ass and do the things that you wanna do that are important. I'm very excited that you'll be on the board and I'm just thrilled that you're here with me now.
Thank you so much, Thomas. I will do that cuz I, most partly cuz I have to, but secondly because. I think that's what I'm being asked to do. That's what people are hopeful for, for, um. And I hope I bring everybody with me and kind of an understanding of how we could be more amazing. And um, I mean, I mean, we're already the, one of the best towns in the world, so what else?
Nice, facts, facts. And then, but then you also wanna be like, oh, that's such a Eugene thing to do is like, we're already the best.
But, come on, we got.
But you gotta engage in it a little bit.
Desert, we got everything here.
Exactly.
I did live in Colorado and I, so probably get me some enemies. And I, I remember them being like, oh, Colorado, it's the most beautiful place. I'm like, where's your ocean? Also. These aren't trees, those little shaking things. No, I mean, they're cute. But where I live, the trees meet over the road. It's a tunnel of beauty and. Yeah, that's where I'm from, so.
There's a spot right on the bike path, um, right? If you go past North Bank McMenamins, it's like between. McMenamins North Bank and like Valley River Inn. And if, that's just when I was a kid, especially in a moonlight. Big night where there's a lot of moonlight, I literally, it's the most blissful spot. Just go and all the trees are arching over the path. And you see the water next to you and it's just.
I've been there, but now I wanna go there with your eyes. I'm gonna go back.
Awesome, awesome. Alright, yeah, thank you, Laurel.